So, so I'm gonna call the special meeting for December fourteenth for Temple City to order. Pursuant to A B three sixty-one, signed by Governor Newsom. Cities allow the whole city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to meeting telephonically, please call one six six nine nine hundred sixty-eight thirty-three, media ID eight one one, one eight five eight two one eight four, pass code seven eight eight one five five, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube. Connect with PC. Madam City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Here.
May you?
Here. For those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comments open during an agenda item discussion. Public comment emails received part two or during the meeting will not be read, but will be included on the record. So, next item is public comment. The time for public comments starts now. I will ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. So, let's give it a few minutes, few seconds. Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers offering comments on this item?
Mayor, you, no public callers on the line and there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, let's give a few, a little bit more time. With nothing from the public and reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close public comment and move on to the next item, which is closed session. The city council and the required staff were now reassessed to breakout room for the closed session discussion. City council will return at a later time. So, the city council just finished the closed session. Mr. City Attorney, would you please report out for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did discuss the national prescription opiate litigation, U.S. District Court, case number one seventeen C V twenty-eight oh four. In the discussion, the city council gave unanimous direction to settle on certain defined terms. Upon the settlement being approved by the court overseeing this case, all settlement documents will become public and may be obtained through the court or at that time through the city clerk's office. That is my report, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, we're moving on to next item unfinished business. There are two items here. The first item is discussion and possible adoption of resolution to continue to allow city council meetings to be held remotely consistent with Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Yu and members of the council. You're all very familiar with this procedure that state law requires for us to continue with remote meetings. Some of the matrix that we've been using, while not perfect, provides at least some level of evidence and findings to continue remote meetings, including L.A. County moving to high transmission rate and the most recent Omicron variant and the unknowns related to that issue at this point in time. The findings are in the resolution for your consideration and I'm here and Mr. Murphy is here for any questions that you may have. Thank you, sir.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Cook or Mr. Murphy? I'll start with Councilmember Viscara.
Oh, you're muted, sir.
I don't have anything different than what we discussed before. I just advise that we move ahead, especially with the new variant.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chavez, any questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Mann?
I have no questions. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
No questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. So, at this time, we'll open public comment. It's time for public comment. I'll ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. Let me see here. I actually don't see any callers. We'll give a little time. So, Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers offering comments on this item?
Mayor Yu, there are no callers on the line and there are no email requests to speak.
Thank you. We'll get a few more, a little bit more time. So, at this time, with nothing more from the public and the reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close public comment and bring it back to the city council for discussion. So, any final council questions or comments? Councilmember Viscara, again.
No, I have none. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Mann?
Not really. I just, just a remark about, I guess, the new cycle in terms of Omicron being, I guess, more identified around here. But it's, seems like it's, at the moment, the data, that kind, that data is offset by the fact that Omicron doesn't seem as as serious in terms of its symptoms. But again, the science behind this is constantly changing. So, I think, as we discussed last meeting, we stay the course. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions and I too would support us moving forward. I think there's a lot of uncertainties, especially in light of the Omicron and also the holidays appointed. So, I think it's prudent for us to continue meeting remotely. So, at this time, I'm ready for a motion.
Oh, move that we go.
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead, will you?
All right. I'll, I'll move. We adopt the resolution number twenty-one dash five five seven two.
Second?
Just move the second. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. So, we are going to meet remotely for next month. Next item is the naming of the park on Primrose Avenue. Mr. Cook or Mr. Matsumoto?
Mayor Pro Tem related to Primrose Park.
That's right.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
We're moving on to the Primrose discussion.
Okay. Um, so I am going to recuse myself. From this, Greg, I just need to mute myself, correct?
Unmute and turn off your camera. Thank you very much, ma'am. And this is, as we've discussed in the past, for any members of the public watching, this is based on a real estate parcel owned by the Mayor Pro Tem within five hundred feet of the park property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Yu. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist as well. If it's okay, Mayor Yu, I'll just turn it directly right over to Parks Director out of Matsumoto.
All right, Director Matsumoto, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Before you today, we brought back a staff report regarding the naming of the park on Primrose Avenue. This item was brought up at your meeting on November sixteenth, requesting a discussion. So, what I went ahead and put together was just a quick overview of of the park development project that's going on at fifty-nine twenty-eight Primrose Avenue. It's been referenced as Primrose Park since we started the development and it's just been continually referenced as Primrose Park without it being officially adopted or chosen as a name for the site. Is per the staff report, I did outline other common naming practices for parks and/or open spaces. Some of the typical naming practices would be naming it after the neighborhood or geographic usage of that space, adjoining street, school or subdivision, a natural or geologic feature of a facility, an outstanding feature, historical figure, place and/or event, or maybe even a donor that's made a significant contribution. So, those are, you know, some of the more typical naming practices for parks and open space. We do have two other parks in the city. One is Temple City Park and the other is Live Oak Park. Again, there's not a common naming practice with those two parks. Temple City Park is our centrally located park next to City Hall. Live Oak Park, I guess you could say references Live Oak Avenue, which is near the park, but it's actually not on Live Oak Avenue. So, what we're looking at from the city council's direction regarding officially choosing a name or providing staff with direction and on some other options based on the discussion for tonight's meeting. It was brought up and this is another option would be to get, gather community input and maybe it's the community that's helping choose the name of the park on, on Primrose Avenue. Just from a timing standpoint, what I wanted to relay is that if we are able to make a decision on the park name this evening, we do still have enough time to be able to relay that to the contractor so we could have our monument signs for the park made and installed by the opening of the park in February of next year. However, if we choose another option that would delay that decision, then we would have to think about either maybe doing some temporary signage on the park when it's opened in February of next year in place of having permanent signage. So, just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the timing. You know, if a decision on the name is not made tonight, but if it's chosen at a later date. That's really all the information I wanted to present to the council and then, you know, obviously open it up for discussion and and see if there's any other options that, that the council may want to consider.
Okay, I will go around and see if there are council questions, starting with Councilmember Viscara. Any questions for, for staff?
I'm kind of torn. Primrose Park seems kind of, I don't know, simplistic or something, but I really can't come up with a better idea other than what I had suggested before, that we have some kind of a citywide contest. But that, of course, means a lot of time and, and probably staff work. So, I guess I'm just open to, to ideas that anybody else may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez, any questions for staff?
Adam, do, do we have a, now you mentioned opening in February. Is that a pretty firm date? I went by there the other day. I, I'm not a contractor, but it seems a little bit ambitious.
The, there's a lot of, I guess, below ground work that's been done to the point where you'll, we'll see quite a bit of activity moving forward more visibly in terms of the more park-like features. So, the playground will be going up. Obviously, we had the rain today that impacted that, but the playground structure should be going up very shortly along with the other shade structures. We have a lot of our park amenity features on site. So, right now, we're still, you know, pretty confident barring, you know, consecutive storm after storm after storm impacting the project that, that February is a, is a pretty solid date for us for an opening.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is that we're kind of entered into traditionally more of our bad weather time. Sure. Maybe we should start a poll, which is going to be first, the, the library or the, or the park.
I'll be the first to put in money for the park.
I think I, I think I, I would tend to agree with that as well. So, I, I, I'm, I'm with Fernando. I, I know we had both talked about it last time about maybe some type of citywide contest or naming contest. The more I thought about that though, the more I thought, well, that could backfire as also as it depending on the type of names that we do get and we're kind of stuck with whatever we've got to choose from. And, and, and I wish I knew how the heck Live Oak Park got their name because it's nowhere near Live Oak. Certainly not on the border of Live Oak. So, maybe that's a question we need to ask Kathy Burrows. She probably know. Fernando, do you remember back then?
No idea.
I have no idea also.
Maybe it's because of the live oak trees that are there. I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know. But, you know, I mean, I call it Primrose Park and I think most people are going to use to it. So, I wouldn't have any heartburn with continuing that. Plus the fact that at some point in time, as we can with any, any park or any area in the city, if we choose to do so, we can always choose to honor somebody or something later on down the road as well. So, you know, that, that wouldn't be that big of a deal. That's all I have. Thank you.
Vince, I just had a thought.
Wait a minute. Uh, yeah, please.
Adam, how, how confident are we that the, the subs for the art are going to be ready by then?
Though, we're still following up with the art pieces. The ones I think that are most in question in terms of the timeline would be the tile murals. Just the nature of the creation of the art would take some time. But the other art pieces, the butterfly benches, the bronze sculptures, which we still need to bring back just for finalizing some of those details, those should be in, no problem with the opening date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mann, any questions for staff?
Yeah, just, just one. Director Matsumoto, could you remind us in terms of the physical signage or any aspect of the art? What part is affected by the name?
So, there's a main, our main entry gateway. If you remember from the concept design, there's, there's a breeze wall into the main entrance, which is off of the parking lot. Above that is, it's, is one of the, the names site. So, it'll say Primrose across the top. There's also the parking lot monument sign where you'll see Primrose listed there. And then there was some discussion about adding Primrose, the name to the bike racks, which, you know, could have it on it or it may not even need a name. It could just have the camellia flower silhouette on it as well. So, but those would be the main two sections, would be the main entrance into the park and then the parking lot monument sign. So, that would be facing towards Primrose Avenue.
So, if, just from a logistics or just a practical angle, if, if the name were to change in the future, it, it, it wouldn't be a monumental effort to, I guess, replace the element that I just referred to?
So, the place where we would maybe have some impacts in terms of if we change the name would be on the main entrance into the park. So, the main entrance into the park, the way the signage is affixed or installed. So, it's going to be on a CMU wall, so on a brick wall or a cinder block wall. And it's almost like, I guess, the, like, home address numbers that are kind of raised off the surface. So, you have like a P that's going to be put on there and there's three holes around the letter of the P that get drilled into that concrete blockwork. So, those holes would either have to be patched or filled or if it's a larger project, we may remove the top row and then reinstall to just make it look a little bit cleaner. But, you know, it can be done. You know, it's, it's, it's not something that's going to be, you know, impossible to do if we decide at some point. There is somebody who will want to recognize for the name of the park or another name that you want to go with down the line. But those would be some of the challenges. On the parking lot monument sign, I believe it's more of a plaque style that can just kind of be pulled off and dropped back on. So, that shouldn't have as much of an impact at all.
Okay. No, thank you. That, that's all the questions I have, Mayor.
I thank you. Actually, I have a sort of semi-question slash comment. I believe Director Matsumoto, we were going to do the permanent sign, we probably current contract, you know, base contract with the current contractor. You want to delay it because the prod, the, the, the project will be done substantially by February, like you said. Chances are, it would not be a, a, either it has to be a change order for the current contractor comeback or we have to be a separate contractor totally. Am I right?
Correct. So, if we're materially finished by that point and let's say we do, you know, temporary signage and as opposed to permit, permanent signage, I don't, we would probably have to create a new contract to, you know, to to complete a, a new signage or replace the existing signage.
Okay.
But I would, I would maybe defer to our city attorney, Mr. Murphy, to see if that would be the case or if we would be able to maybe keep that partially open if we're provided, let's say, a window of, let's say, three to four months of being able to, to name, create a name and then have it completed if we're maybe able to provide a timeframe as part of a change order.
We could certainly do that, but the question in my mind is whether the contractor would be willing to do it, given the retention issues to leave a contract open for what amounts to a fairly small dollar value item rather than wrapping it up. It may be difficult to have a contractor do that, but certainly something we could look into together. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, if there are no more questions, I'm going to open public comment. So, it's time for public to call in. I'll ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at a Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. Madam Clerk, would you time the start the clock, please? So, we'll give the public a little time to call in in case they have opinion about the naming of the park. So, Madam Clerk, I don't see any callers. Do you see any callers calling in?
Mayor Yu, there are no callers on the line and no email request to speak.
Okay. Well, with nothing from the public and reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for final discussion. So, starting with Councilmember Viscara, any final questions or comments?
One kind of off the subject, but I was just thinking about it. How does the public know when we have a meeting like this out of secret?
Councilmember Viscara, the normal noticing and email notification list that the public, that members select to be part of with the city clerk are notified of the meeting. So, you're essentially normal notification process.
And if I may add to that, Councilmember Viscara, at the last meeting, we actually didn't tell the public it will be on a, on a, will be held on a special date to be confirmed. So, at least they know it's, it, it, it got deferred.
It will be different.
Yeah.
Um, well, for lack of any better ideas, I guess I would just suggest that we proceed with Primrose. And it sounds like it wouldn't be that onerous to engage in, in another doing something else if in fact we choose to do so. The, the construction aspect of that doesn't seem to be too, too hard to do. So, for now, I'd say let's, let's proceed with Primrose.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
I'm good with Primrose.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, I think in summary, I'm, I'm fine with Primrose. I think like Councilmember Chavez mentioned, if at the future we choose to rename it for any reason, we can undertake that at that time. I, I would hate for anything we do to adversely impact the current schedule.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I also agree with Councilmember Mann that we should not impact the schedule and, and that's why I asked a question earlier. I, I think, you know, for the expediency and efficient use of textile, I think we should try to come up with a name right now and also agree with Councilmember Chavez, you know, opening up to the public doesn't really give us a, you know, we may come with a name that we may come to regret later. But instead of just Primrose Park, actually, I was, obviously, there's enough vote here apparently for Primrose Park. I was thinking of calling it Camellia Park. You know, with, with the confusing part is Camellia Avenue is only a block, well, two blocks over, I guess, across on the east side of Temple City Boulevard. The reason I say that was that I, you know, if all you may remember, as the landscape architect designed a park, there had been some thoughts in giving it a, a floral camellia was the concept. And as you may remember, the playground equipment and the color that we have chosen were really more towards the camellia and camellia being our city flower. And even earlier, when Director Matsumoto was talking about, oh, we, we, or we either put a Primrose there or just leave the camellia logo on there. I mean, we're still referring to camellia. So, actually, I was going to suggest that we consider calling Camellia Park. I mean, like the, if you called an era made on the naming of Live Oak Park, if being like a block or two away from Live Oak Avenue, I think there's been a precedent for Temple City to call park to something that's close, but not necessarily right on the address. So, that's my two cents. So, if anybody still think it's worth a, a thought, then I think we can consider that. So, with, with that, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to confirm the Primrose Park?
Well, you gave me something to think about, Vince.
Make a motion that we rename the new park Primrose Park for the time being.
Oh, second.
It's both been seconded. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist? Excuse me, she's recused. Mayor Yu?
Uh, yes. So, actually, I'm torn between the two. I mean, I, I'm comfortable Primrose Park as well. So, so people for sure will find it.
You know, Vince, I, I don't disagree with your thought process, but then years from now, people are going to be asking the same questions. Well, why did you name it Live Oak Park when it's not on Live Oak?
Oh, I was thinking.
And, and then they'll blame you.
Yeah. Oh, I was thinking. It said, you know, you told me, let's meet over Camellia Park, but I drove all the up and down.
Yeah, I went on Camellia. I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it. I find Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, but not the park. I find Mayor Protem Sternquist, but not the park.
Yep.
So.
You you know what would be even better is if we called it Oak Park. So people will get really confused. They'll be like, did you mean Live Oak or Oak Park?
You know, we Avenue.
Okay. Right next door.
So. So with that, I guess we now have a name and the next item is a German. Actually, Mayor Protem Stern, but you can come back now. Actually, you heard what we talked about. So so with that.
Mayor Yu, I loved the name Camellia Park.
Of course you would.
I love living on Camellia Street. Why wouldn't I love Camellia Park?
Yes, yes, yes.
People are going to be turning around in your driveway looking for the park, though.
The more the merrier.
Yeah. So with that, I will adjourn this special meeting. So we'll see you next, we'll see you all next week.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.